Good evening, Canby. We are opening the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for October 15, 2025. We will put the formalities over to the council meeting. And is there any citizen input? I don't see any cards. Anybody online, Teresa?
No.
Is this for Urban Renewal, or is this for council?
Put ten, Toby.
Okay, I will look at the card. We don't have any urban renewal projects that this would qualify for, so I'm going to put this over to the mayor for the council meeting. And we'll move on to new business. Randy.
Thank you, Chair Hensley, members of the commission tonight. It's nice to be with you, Randy Ely. We're here tonight to talk about finalizing the transition of the current urban renewal district expenses and the Canby Urban Renewal Agency. Jamie Stickle is here with me, your Economic Development Director. I'd like to walk through a brief presentation. We've been calling it "Working on Landing the Plane," and all voices are welcome on that discussion. You've had multiple discussions here to date on the mechanics of how to land that and close out the Urban Renewal Agency here in Canby. It's had a nice long run since, I believe, 1999, and tax increment has been generated. Jamie has some stats for you on that, some projects in collaboration. Our fire district is here tonight to observe our schools. We talked to our school superintendent this afternoon, so we're about set to return that increment back to the junior taxing districts in the next fiscal year. So one of those is our own general fund here at the city. We'll get into that detail a little bit later, and we'll be excited to entertain any questions you might have about the mechanics of that after Jamie walks us through a nice little PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, thank you. Jamie.
Great. Jamie Stickle, Director of Economic Development. And as Randy said, we're going to hear some options tonight on how exactly to close urban renewal in Canby. Both of the options, and you'll see this on a couple of different slides, but I just want to make sure that I'm being upfront and as transparent as possible. Both of these options return the increment to the special districts. So we're hoping to just get some consensus on how the agency would like to close the urban renewal district. There's an option via ordinance or resolution. This information is going to be somewhat repetitive in the sense that we had part of a discussion in April, but that discussion also talked about an urban renewal project, specifically North Fur Street, and that project is underway of getting proposals for construction. And so at this time, we'll just kick things off. The Canby Urban Renewal District, so we wanted to include this slide just to show the expansiveness of the district itself. So it actually goes all the way to territorial on the logging trail. It goes down to community park, industrial park, Highway 99, and then downtown. It's the lights shaded blue on that map. It was established in 1999. The plan outlined projects which are funded through tax increment financing, and again, in April, that's when we came to review options to close the district. As of June 30 of 2024, the estimated increase in assessed value due to development was $234 million. That number will have gone up, and we will present that at an urban renewal annual report to you once our new finance director is on board. This item comes back to you not just because we are at the end of the life of the urban renewal district, but as also one of the city council goals, which was to promote financial stability and finalize the transition of the current urban renewal district expenses. Just while you are very familiar with many of the urban renewal projects, we wanted to just give a couple of looks at some of the ways that urban renewal has been used in Canby. This is a very, very, very small slice of the project. So Northwest First Avenue was redeveloped. That was the first project that I worked on when I came here 13 years ago. We have Sequoia Parkway, the bridge that goes over the train trussel, the Civic Building, and then the Grant Street Arch and Quiet Zone. On June 1 of 2026, the city will make the final urban renewal debt payment. We'll notify while we've been discussing this item with the tax assessors from at least April of, or March of last year, or, sorry, March of this year, we will notify the official notification to Clackamas County Tax Assessors Office in February of 2026, and that is in order to give them enough time so that they know that exactly when the payment will come through, and there's a timing sequence to that. Our finance department has been very supportive and helpful in making sure that we are sequencing that appropriately. Clackamas County will then distribute the, will disperse the remaining funds to all of the taxing districts, which will include the city of Canby, and the special taxing districts will begin to receive their full share of the PAC property tax revenue in fiscal year 2027, with the issuance of those funds expected in October or November of 2026. So during the fiscal year, the way that the city does. So the two options to consider before you this evening. One is the resolution, which is that if you terminate the urban renewal plan, so just the plan, by resolution, then the city can keep the agency, which is then rendered inactive. Without a plan, the district becomes inactive. Should the city determine a need in the future for a new plan or a new district, this path makes it easier to reopen. But even with all of that, the special taxing districts will receive their full property tax revenue. If you choose to close it by ordinance, the urban renewal agency is then terminated by ordinance. So the plan goes away, the ordinance goes away, and the district goes away. Should the city then determine a need for a new plan or district, the effort would need to start from scratch. And again, the special taxing districts will receive the full property tax revenue.
We'll come back to that slide.
Yes, sorry, thank you. And so also wanted to give an idea of what those amounts would look like on a yearly basis. So these are the 2024 numbers. Clackamas County is in the process of updating these numbers for 2025. So I would imagine that by the time that we come back for whether we're closing the district by an ordinance or a resolution, we'll have those 2025 numbers. But this is the amount that the special taxing districts can expect to receive once the urban renewal district closes. So just to call a few out, the city of Canby, just over $1 million. The Canby Fire District, just over $500,000. Vector Control, $1,922. So that's a total of 400, it's not 400, 4.300, nope, I did that wrong the second time, $4,341,000. There we go. And so wanted to kind of leave this with you for the discussion and questions. Back to the question of the day, which is, do we want to render the agency inactive with the possibility of then creating a new plan, a new district in the future, or close it via ordinance to be able to fully close it down, which would then need to start from scratch in the future?
Okay. Commissioner Davis, or Commissioner Davis, pardon.
Thank you. I do have a question. If we do it by resolution, the current urban renewal agency has its boundaries currently set. By doing it by resolution, at which time we wanted to reenact the urban renewal district, we're still mandated by those boundaries?
I do not believe so. The way that Emily Guymont made the, when we were talking about it previously, what she said was that it just makes the agency inactive, and that then you would need a new plan. And with the new plan, there can be a new district. So if for some reason you wanted to keep some of Highway 99, or some of the industrial park, or some of downtown, or a mix of that, and extend it further with, to match urban growth boundary expansion, that you would be able to do so at that time, when you're building that plan of how you would like to see that money put into effect.
Okay. I would be in favor of the ordinance of closing the urban renewal district. And the reason I say that is the fact that it provides more citizen input into the plan, rather than us just saying we're going to carry this plan forward. The last legislation, they'd actually proposed legislation that they would require a public vote potentially moving forward, and I would expect that that legislation may come forward anyway. So and looking back on this, and the amount of time that was spent on, from a special district in regards to the development of the plan itself, I think that by closing it, and we have a fresh plan, but the other reason would be that with the new comprehensive plan, the city's comprehensive plan, we can build that in, because we don't even have that comprehensive plan at this point. So we don't know where the industrial area potentially might be in the future, and whether or not that would be part of an urban renewal district anyway. And until we resolve the power issue within the city, or within the growth area, it's a mute point, you know, in regards to the development. And to reenact it, I think, doesn't provide public input to the process. We would have public hearing and stuff like that, but I think that it's cleaner just by closing it by ordinance. And my full intention was, dating back to April, last budget, was to close it entirely.
Yeah, I would agree, Commissioner Davis. A more robust conversation would have to take place to open a new agency in a new district by ordinance, and I think that that's important, because then the junior taxing districts would have more of a voice than if we just closed the plan by resolution. Seeing the fire district nodding their heads right now. So I think that that would be the cleanest way to do it, and I'll take a conversation from others, but I just wanted to say that point. And also, I am curious about if the boundaries would truly have to, if that's, he raised a good question there. So I would concur on that, that it would have to take a bigger conversation to open it if it's by ordinance, and I like that idea. Any questions for Jamie and Randy? Commissioner Sterns?
I'm just curious. The phrase "start from scratch" versus "open a new plan," what is the processes involved in each compared to one compared to another? I mean, is it the same process? Is it different? I mean, if we close it today, could we open it tomorrow just with a vote, or is it, or is there, or there's, what's involved in each option?
I'll take a first shot at that. The, we'll have to track the legislation, Commissioner Davis. If new urban renewal districts are going to be voter approved, this is my third urban renewal district. In Estacada was not voter approved, in Beaverton it was. So going forward, I'm not sure if all new urban renewal districts in Oregon need to be voter approved. I'll have to take that as a to-do. So that's one question to get answered. Commissioner Sterns, as a step in the process, creating a new plan regardless, I would see going forward for a new district, and that's a big undertaking. Have to hire consultants and do, create an urban renewal plan. It's part of our urban growth boundary expansion, part of our power interests, where we're looking at power supply. All of that will be going forward in the future. I see our planning directors in the back here with us. So all those steps, so starting from scratch, in both cases essentially, and creating a new plan and a new agency.
So if I'm hearing you right, starting from scratch, or starting a new plan with a commission that went dormant, is about the same amount of work each way, or?
The subtle difference, Jamie points this out on the slide, is that by resolution, you keep the agency alive. It's dormant.
So but to reawaken a dormant one is?
Yeah.
What kind of work?
It saves one step.
One step. And what's that one step? Just the voter approval, or?
No.
And I was doing some research in preparation for this meeting, and I'm looking to Commissioner, or to Chair Hensley.
Chair.
But I believe that the voter approval for urban renewal districts was voted down this, like, this rate.
It wasn't voted down. It just didn't move forward from committee, but it is likely to be resurrected.
Oh, okay.
But so that's a conversation that's not over.
Right.
But to the point of ordinance versus resolution, new agency versus dormant agency, this makeup could look very different. And another reason why it should be by ordinance, because then the next rendition of us would be the ones to go through that process.
Well, it takes about the same amount of work either way to resurrect it. I'd rather just kill it and then start it from scratch, because things like practically speaking, there's no point in having a thing, you know, life support, when we could just kill it.
Commissioner Patton, Ben Waterman.
Yeah. So I, after chatting with the people, I've had a chance to chat with the folks that worked to create the urban renewal district, its original one, and they explained to me that it was a huge undertaking. To that point, Councilor Sterns, it is not, there is a huge difference between making the commission go dormant and then creating a new plan compared to starting from scratch. It is a whole lot more work to start it from scratch than it is to just reactivate a dormant committee and then create a new plan. No way of slicing that bread any other way.
Do you know what steps are?
Community involvement, landowner involvement, creating a whole new board, the amount of paperwork and studies that need to be done or more. There is a lot more money involved. There would be a lot more money involved in starting from scratch, and a lot more time involved starting from scratch than just starting from a place where we left off. I'm a little torn between the two. I have always said that the district needs to close, because one of the, one of the things that has been said by many of the detractors for our urban renewal district is that there was the fear that the city of Canby would abuse it like other municipalities have. And it has always been my goal, if I sat on this board, to ensure that that did not happen. To show those junior taxing districts and those naysayers in the community that Canby will live up to its word of creating something that will create more tax increment for everybody involved, and then when it's time to let it go, they let that money go back to these people. And that is something that we are doing. But I was always under the impression that it just had to die. And the next time you wanted to do one, which I am in favor of creating a new urban renewal district once the urban growth boundary expansion has been completed. I think that we have had tremendous success in putting in the infrastructure and those sort of things with that money, and I see that as being one of the only real ways if we want to expand our industrial park, and perhaps do something similar to the Delia, or whatever downtown on some other pieces of property. That's really one of the few ways that we're able to do that. So for me, I, between the two options, I would lean more towards closing it by resolution. In the end, if a new council, to Chair Hensley's point, you know, in five, 10 years, when that time comes around, and it's a new council, that council would then be able to decide. I don't think there's anything precluding a different council from saying, hey, we want to revisit that, and we are deciding that we want to actually end it all together, right? Like, once you make the decision to, once you make this decision, it's not like we are tying the hands of a future city council. It becomes their option later on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. For me, I would much rather leave that option, an easier option for members of council to then have that discussion later, rather than them sitting at this dais and saying, you know what, I wish that council back in 2005 had have done it this way. Because now we have all this extra work and all this stuff we need to do to try and get this plan moving, when we have people wanting to develop in the park, and we want to do all these things. So to me, that is why I would prefer to do it through resolution rather than ordinance. And as far as like incorporating property that's already like in this existing one, I would assume that if that was the case, any property that is part of what we currently have, if it was moved into a new one, would then essentially lock it back up, and whatever tax increment was coming from that property would then be essentially pulled out of those junior taxing districts. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think I fully understand.
So like, let's say we decide, let's say a council decides we want to do all this land out in the industrial park, but we've identified a couple of pieces of property or a couple of blocks within the downtown core that we would like to see more higher density residential built, similar to the Delia. And so we're going to put all this land into the plan, but then we're also going to put these couple of blocks in the downtown core. I assume that when those couple of blocks are put in, then that tax increment would get pulled out and go towards the district rather than to the junior taxing districts, correct? Okay, that is something that would be?
It would essentially be just like how our current district boundaries operate, just with a new.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. I mean, so yeah, so that's why I, that's why I would lean more towards resolution, just so that we are, we're providing a bit of a launch platform for future city councils, if they so choose to do this again. And they can decide to, you know, include the community, and if they want to put it to a vote, they can put it to a vote, too. It would leave it, it would leave it up to them to decide.
To your point about, also about community involvement, I do wanted to say that as I was looking through like the urban renewal plan, and there was significant community involvement, and I think, you know, that was 1999 that it was approved, right? So social media is very different. The way that we engage with our community is different. So, you know, I would imagine that also learning from the ways that we've increased our community outreach, that that aspect, whether, regardless of which decision is decided, or which route we go, that that community engagement aspect, I think, would be stronger than it even has been in the past, just to make sure that we're, you know, bringing people on board if it's not a voter approval thing. But even if it is, I think there would be significant engagement, just to make sure that the plan matches the, you know, will of the community and has the support as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Waterman, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah. From, I guess from like, from a voter perspective, it doesn't really change anything from their aspect other than where the money goes and what services are being funded with that money. So the fire department, the school district, in the city, et cetera, they're the, really the non beneficiaries of, basically the money gets taken away from them when this goes into place. So, so the school district gets a little bit less money, the fire department gets a little bit less money, et cetera, when, when this district, when there's an urban renewal district. Is that correct? No?
I'm taking a shot.
Go for it.
Because we're putting money back in now that wasn't there. So if we go put another one in, then that's going to take it back out. And that's less operating expenses for each of these entities.
It freezes the tax base. So what, when this ends and we return the current funding every year back to, we'll use the fire district since they're here. If we create another urban renewal district, that tax base stays where it is and anything incremental becomes funding for the urban renewal district. So they still maintain their new funding amount.
So it's just, so they don't lose money going retroact like? Can you just anything additional that that increase wouldn't go towards those districts?
Can you go back to that last item, all the funding? So yeah, so Camby Fire District would not lose that $500,000 if a new urban renewal district was created.
They just wouldn't get any increases for however long the district was.
So that 3% increase, they would not, it would not build on top of that. That would still be deferred. That portion of increase would be put towards the urban renewal district.
Okay. If there's any other clarifications, I'm happy to hear. Or is there anything else on that? Or I, I'm just, otherwise that's it. I, I get, so that, that helps me understand that process a little bit more. I appreciate that.
Okay. Vice Chair, then Davis.
Well, I, I mean, so Camby Pioneer Industrial Park, how much has been that? How much of a value increase have we had on that land? Where are we at? Like the valuation of?
I don't have for just the industrial park. I just have the, the urban renewal district.
Sure. Let's go with that.
The increase is $234 million due to development. And because that removes the, well, the frozen base as well as the 3% increase over, you know, year-over-year increase. So it moves both of those and then the, the final number is 234.
Since 1999?
Over the 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
Does that include Columbia Distribution?
Pardon?
Does that include Columbia Distribution? Well, it can't because Columbia Distribution's on a size. They're on a separate, they, they're on a separate 15-year agreement.
Well, right. So there is a strategic investment zone. But, and actually I don't think that Columbia Distribution is located within the urban renewal district.
Yes, it is.
I, I would have to double check that.
Okay. So as I look at the, for the city rights of the $1,087,000, that's for, that will come out in October, November of '26. That, that will see that. Okay? But then every year, there's at least a 3% increase on that every year, correct? Okay. And so, and that right now, that number does not include the development of Tram McCrow and whatever may go into that building. Okay. And that property is in the urban renewal district.
I don't think that corner is. Is it, Jamie?
American Steel is not in, and BBC Steel is not in the urban renewal district. But I believe the Y-Gam property is in the urban renewal district.
Maybe. I don't know. I didn't think so.
I do not think so.
I don't believe so.
No, it's not. Because the fire district was anticipating that revenue because it was outside the urban renewal district.
Okay. Well, then I will stand down on that one. And last budget meeting, based on what we were looking at, so with the closure of the urban renewal district, we're looking at about a half a million dollars in salaries and benefits that will need to be absorbed into the general fund, correct?
Roughly, yes.
Correct.
Vice Chair.
So I, I too, much like Counselor Patton, I'm, I'm a little bit torn on, you know, resolution versus ordinance because I think, I think it is the right thing that we don't continue to extend it. I know that Clackamas County has done that a couple of times. I know Portland has done that a couple of times. So I guess in terms of the resolution piece, Jamie, the resolution still allows for the input and the creation of a new plan, correct?
Yes. You, in, in order to re, restart the urban renewal, you would have to have a new plan.
All right. So we don't, we're not beholden to the current map or anything like that in that regards. Okay? Does the resolution, that would then, so if we didn't want to do a whole massive district like we have now and we wanted to do more of a project by project urban renewal districts, the resolution, it would still follow the same policy but, or procedural aspects and still be able to do that versus starting from scratch just to be able to do? Because it would seem to me that if we did an ordinance, closing it entirely, if we wanted to do project, project by project urban renewal districts, then we'd have to go through every time and redo an urban renewal district every time. Am I, I'm not, so let's just say like we wanted to do another Dali project in the downtown, right, and we made that its own urban renewal district, right? And so, once that was going, if we wanted to do another one, then basically we're recreating the wheel on another urban renewal district.
That's the model Wilsonville has done.
Right. Wilsonville has the same model. And so what does, you know, does that, does that, if it's ordinance, then are we individually starting new urban renewal districts, project by project, if that's what this council or future councils decide? Or is, again, under resolution, it starts, it's, you know, it seems to be that we would have a little bit more flexibility on the resolution side of things if that's the route a council would want to go.
I would have to look into that answer.
It seems like there's, to me, there's still, and I know there's a couple of other questions, but I think we, it's a great dialogue and I'm all for making sure that we get the dollars back to the taxing districts, absolutely. It seems like we have a lot of questions on what the process looks like for either way. And I would almost, for me, I, I would rather make sure we get those questions answered to better articulate, I guess, our argument and be able to, you know, I mean, I get both ways, but there seems to be, do we totally lock it down and have to start all over? You know, which we can, but if a resolution at least keeps the agency framework that then still enables us, because we still have to go back and do all the community input, we would still have to go back and do a new plan. We'd have to do a new map. All those pieces are there. So that, I just, I would prefer maybe just getting all of these questions answered down the road.
Sure. Are you jotting down the things that?
Certainly. And also, when we were preparing the original staff report to come before you in April, Emily Guymont from Barry Elsner and Hammond was very instrumental in that process of having those, navigating the, the questions. And so I would imagine that with anything that we bring back, we might also want them to weigh in on that. They were the firm that we used previously for.
The historical gatekeepers of it all.
Yeah. Okay. Another thing I would want to add to Counselor David, Commissioner Davis and my point about going about of ordinance versus resolution is that was 20 years ago. There was a great deal of public input. I realize that. But our community looks vastly different than it did 20 years ago. And I think that the robust conversation is very important and also some education on other alternatives to urban renewal. We've got size. We've got business improvement districts. We've got local improvement districts. We don't always have to use U R D. So I think that if we shut it down by ordinance, then they have to have that conversation of which direction it needs to go. What's the best fit for that project? And I do have a card here, but there was another question. Commissioner Davis and then Waterman and then Patton in that order since that's the way I saw your fingers.
So I do agree with, with Brian in regards to the fact that there's a lot of unanswered questions. One is the boundary. I think it's a speculation right now. We don't have anything from a legal firm in regards to the, whether or not you can create new boundaries or if the current boundaries remain because that does us absolutely no good in the comprehensive plan. The, the second part would also be the comprehensive plan. We're in the midst of the comprehensive plan. We don't even know where the urban renewal boundaries are going to expand to until that's been completed. And I think that that's an important factor as well because I do agree with Jason in regards to the fact that in the future, if there's a big piece of property there and we want to do a spot urban renewal and when that's completed, everybody gets their, their tax base. That's totally different than what we're currently doing. And so that's why I think that by closing it, us getting more information in front of us moving forward, then we will, we will know where we're going at that point. Plus, it provides citizen input from the very beginning because I can see that citizens are going to come in, well, you just extended the existing one. You kept it going without any public input. There's nobody here, you know? And the other junior taxing districts aren't here to speak to it as well too. You know, so that's why I think that we do need more information and we need somebody from our attorney firm to be able to answer those questions that we've raised.
Commissioner Waterman.
What's the deadline for making this decision?
Jim, probably?
I would, well, next year, of course.
Yeah. Is it, has it happened beforehand?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that'd be my recommendation.
We have to let the county know in February. That our intentions of.
Yeah. So we have to kind of make the decision by February then?
We have, we have a couple of months. So we don't have to make a decision tonight.
But it's not like you have eight, eight months to figure?
No, but we have time for them to come back and do another meeting like this with the answers to these questions. Counselor, Commissioner Patton.
Yeah. So, you know, something was, there was a couple of comments made about the urban renewal district. And I've, I'm very aware of the fact that people loathe the urban renewal district. But I will throw out this counter talking point. We're trying desperately to get Walnut Street extension done. And one of the reasons why that's taking time, if memory serves me correctly, is because most of that area is not included in the urban renewal district. And so we were not able to use urban renewal funds to build that road out. So we are then left to try and do that on our own through taking little chunks of money from people who were developing this building and taking a little bit here and taking a little there. And it's still in the process of being done years after we've needed it. For all the trash talk that the urban renewal gets, the urban renewal district gets, none of the infrastructure or a fraction of the infrastructure that has been put in that district, including this building, our new police state, our new police station, all of those things would not be built to this day if it wasn't for that money being sheltered so that it could be used for those projects. And I would be hard pressed for anybody to say that any of these junior taxing districts would be getting a fraction of any of this money if that land was sitting as farmland or swampland or whatever it was before. So, good, bad or indifferent, Camby did its urban renewal district and it did it, in my opinion, the way that it was supposed to be done. To take land that was not as valuable as it was, create it into something that was more valuable so all the taxing districts could benefit from it. And I would like to see that done again.
Commissioner Sterns, and then if we could, we have one more topic to talk about before we start.
Okay. Just really quick. I totally agree. We just need to get a, some sort of worksheet that says, what's the cost of resurrecting a new one versus resurrecting a, a sleeping one? And then also the one question that probably needs to ask the, the attorneys is that the Urban Renewal Agency has, I assume, a corporate existence. And since it has a corporate existence, by making it go dormant and then resurrecting it later, does that leave open liability? Because generally in my field, we always tell people when companies are go dormant, just kill them and resurrect and get a new one because the, you don't want old liabilities haunting you in your, from their, from the previous pack. Some people like want to take a LLC and just say, I want to make it do a new thing. I was selling chocolates with it before and now I want to make it into a trucking company. And we'll say, that's a bad idea because you want to leave the, all the liability or potential liability from the, the old business and let it die. And in the new business, you don't want to be haunted by the old LLC liability. So that's, that's kind of a legal question, but I think that's something to, to take into account when deciding whether to leave something in the sort of sleeping zombie-like state. So that's all I wanted to ask for.
Okay. Before we take the public comment on this item, do you have enough to come back to us with answers to questions? I want to have for another meeting. Okay. And then I will call up Lori Fassett, wants to talk on this subject. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you so very, very much. I appreciate the Urban Renewal Agency's dialogue and all of the questions and the digging into it. And I appreciate your perspective because I agree. The urban renewal district did its job. It's wonderful that it did such a great job for Camby. I only have a clarification question. It might be task, I'm sorry. Jamie. Thank you. Between resolution and ordinance, and I don't know the answer and why I'm asking, do the smaller taxing districts lose their voice with the resolution versus an ordinance? And does the public perhaps lose its voice with the resolution versus the ordinance?
I think Randy and Jamie can answer to that. And my understanding is that you, they don't lose their voice, but I feel like it'd be a more robust conversation if it's via ordinance.
Okay.
Because there would be more steps to be having to take. So therefore there'd be more opportunities for that voice to be heard.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Jamie? Thank you.
That would be another question for the attorney to answer.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Yeah. And outside of that, just thank you, counsel, for, commissioners for taking my time.
All right. Thank you, Lori. All right. Well, with that, I think we're going to move on to the next item so we can get this wrapped up before council. So item B.
Madam Chair, just clarification of order. So we're not making a motion or anything. We're just asking staff to go get our questions answered.
They're going to fetch some answers. We're going to revisit this conversation in a future meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. And then item B is Walnut Street roadway easement. And this is, Randy Ely is going to brief us on this.
Thank you, Chair Hensley and Commissioners, as our guests exit. Good discussion earlier. Got our homework. I just want to touch on a little bit because Walnut has been a big discussion. We can talk a little bit more about this in council tonight. But as part of this project falls under urban renewal, we're, we're about, I would guess, 10% along the way on Walnut, dating all the way back to 2018. So going way back here. Now we're, we're pushing on about four or five different fronts at the same time. All in about a 20, nearing a $22 million budget with a lot of different funding sources, including some ARPA money that you all successfully procured back in the day. We need to spend that money by the end of the year, December 31st, 2026, next calendar year. But in working with public work staff, the county, our engineers, we just obtained a Lux, a land use compatibility study that was approved for our 1,200 C and sewer permits. We're getting, the Urban Renewal Agency needs to sign this easement, which Jamie will be bringing at our next scheduled meeting. All of the landowners have already signed their easements. So we're, we're moving forward on those. They just had a labeling issue. It needed to be on county templates. So that is resolved. You can rest easy about that. And then D K S has reported that they are into ODOT with a permit application. We should hear back by November 4th for the signal, that intersection. So that's like, that's four different sort of key pieces of Walnut. We're moving forward at the same time right now to hit the construction. Ideally, looking for March, spring of next year to commence with that. So.
Okay.
More, more during council probably setting, but since we need an easement signed by your agency, Chair Hensley and Commissioners. your agency, Chair Hensley and Commissioners, thought we'd touch on that briefly tonight.
Okay, and when is that time, that timeline for getting those easements? I mean, we did just have a robust discussion about closing this agency, so.
Yeah, right. Good, good question, Madam Chair. I believe that's, we could schedule as soon as our next meeting.
So there are two easements that need to happen. I believe one of them is a right-of-way easement, and one of them is a permanent roadway easement. And then the request to waive appraisal of the land that Green Property, as in last name Green, not physically Green, that the Urban Renewal Agency purchased in 2019. And so the Kern, Kern MacLeod is working with Clackamas County. They will put all of the paperwork into Clackamas County's format, and it could be here before you at the next meeting night, if we had time on an agenda to be able to do that.
Oh, okay.
Staff report and resolution's already done, it's just we didn't have those documents, and frankly, I didn't want to come before you and ask for the agency to consider authorizing Randy to sign documents that you didn't at least have a good look at, because I know that there's very curious minds. The one thing that Kurt MacLeod said that I think is very important is that the easement, or the easement work with the right-of-ways, that does not preclude anything else moving forward, like the intergovernmental agreement or those kinds of things, it won't stop any work or, or slow down any work.
Okay, but the easement piece is the only piece that this board needs to do with these hats on, the rest can be done under council? Yes, I believe, sorry.
Yes, because my understanding is, it's the easements that you're just, that are in the urban renewal district that you were talking about right now.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
I'm still, I'm a little confused here, so bear with me, but the, it's a small piece up by Walnut and First Avenue. That small piece of property is, was brought into the urban renewal district by Rick Robinson at the time, in agreement with the junior taxing districts. So there's just that piece. Where is the easement that you're asking for?
It's, it's actually the easement of that property that it has to go through, since it's owned by the Urban Renewal Agency.
So it's a small piece?
Yes.
Then the rest is going to be soon in the city?
Yes.
Is that right? So, okay, so it has to actually go to the urban renewal district as well as the city?
Well, the, the piece, just I think on the property that we own, has to come to the urban renewal district, since the Urban Renewal Agency technically owns that property. So it's, it's basically, think of it as, as this agency is the property owner?
Right.
And you're allowing, this is where it gets tricky, you're allowing the city to then have a chunk of that land for the roads.
My Lord.
So it's, it's unique in the sense that our, our board is wearing two different hats, but it's literally so that the agency can approve the roadway going through there as far as the city is concerned.
Let me ask a funky question, then, let's do, did you have a follow-up?
Yep.
Okay. What does that look like, then? This project is going to go past the life of this agency? It's not going to be completed until after this is done? How do we, we approve the, the easements, but we will no longer own the property if we're not an agency, so is there IGAs, or do we sell the property to the city, or how does that look?
I, that I will have to, I think that actually kind of goes to Commissioner Stern's last question about like that.
The liability piece.
Existence and the liability, and I know that most of those properties or most of the projects that we've done with urban renewal then get moved over to the city.
Okay.
So it could be that that's part of the process, but that I don't have the answer to, and so I will, I'll check.
Yeah, that too, that's okay, very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Patton?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said correctly. You know, the process started in 2018, we're now in September of 2025, and you're saying that really about 10% of the process has been completed to get the road underway?
Would you say that's a low estimate, or? That was my, Jerry, good, good question, Commissioner.
Yeah, there's just, yeah, Commissioner Patton, it's a good question, because there's so many moving parts to this thing. We got the sewer coming in, that's underway. That was our biggest challenge, is to get it under the tracks and into Willow Creek to serve that area, because it's kind of an island between two creeks. The, what held us up was the back and forth with ODOT on the signal connection. And so we had to spend all that time to get the IGA originally, remember, we had to get an IGA, give them a pot of money to dig into this, to see if they'd even give us an access permit. So that took a whole bunch of time. We got the access permit, the IGA signed, now it's gone back and forth like three times between DKS engineering and ODOT on finalizing the plans. So it's going back now. So that was the biggest thing. The road's useless if we can't get the signal in, so it's held everything up. The, the design is like, I would say, signs at 80%, which is good, the signal's at 100%, the sewer's at 100%. So construction's ready to go, if we can get the 74 feet of property to build the road through the urban renewal property, and get the IGA approved with the county through the city council to build a city road in, out of the city limits. So I know I'm bouncing around the question, but if we can get those three things done, we can put this thing out to bid and start construction.
Okay.
So however you want to look at the percentage, we haven't started any work, but the, the legwork is almost there, but we got to get it to the finish, across the finish line.
Okay, so after hearing all of that, because part of the problem is, is after our previous meeting, like I, I don't know about you folks, but I was under the impression that Walnut Street was like, we were ready to break ground and we're going to get that in there ASAP. And so when people have come to me and said, Jason, what the hell's up with Walnut? I'm like, yeah, any day now, we're going to, we got this, we got that, bing bang boom, trucks no more near the Fred Meyer, right?
Yep.
And then the last minute, it's like, mm, actually, we're not even, we're not even there yet. And so now people are coming to me saying, what are you talking, what are you doing?
Yeah.
And so to me, so I can explain this to people, it sounds like right now we're at 10%. But if these three or four things happen, we could go from 10% to 90% very quickly.
Correct.
Okay. But until, until these five things are done, we're stuck at 10%.
Yep.
Okay.
We're just stuck until we get these, these few things done, which were, which with Randy's help has been amazing, or we'd be really stuck right now. I will be honest, I was just pulling my hair out, as you can see.
Yeah.
Trying to get all this through, and with his connections and everything, I can't believe the light speed we've made to get to a pretty low percentage of your project done. But, but yeah, no, it's, the design's done for, I mean, the, the design's ready, we're ready to put this thing out to bid, we just need to have the final little things and get approval from the county and all that, and we're going to go to work.
Okay, thank you.
Unexpected detour.
We're almost there. Yep.
Anything else from this body for staff? Anything from staff for us?
Oh.
Oh, apparently we have another question, yes.
I do have one other thing. So at a previous urban renewal meeting, we had talked about the different projects that we wanted to do to finalize things.
Yeah.
Now that we're coming towards the end of this, like, where are we at with those projects? Are they completed? There was talk about, you know, can we, can we, like, to do the, like, street rondelles? Can we, you know, act like chipmunks and squirrel some of the money away in our cheeks for that, right? Where are we at on all of that?
Is this a couple of minutes?
Yes.
Or can you, or do you need to wait to the next meeting for that?
It'll be just very, very brief, but hopefully provide enough information.
Okay.
The urban renewal district, the pathway from the logging bridge down is underway, and we hope to have that completed in the next.
Month.
Month or so. So that, I know that, yeah, Jerry Nelson and Maria Toledo from our Public Works Department walked that today, and, and so it's, that's moving along quite nicely. That leaves the, about one point, I just wrote it down, 1.65, 6, 6 million for Fur Street, and that Fur Street request for proposals went out to our top three on-call engineers, or our three on-call engineers, which is HHPR, Kittleson, and Sissel, Pat Sissel. And that closes on Monday, just this coming Monday, the 20th. So we should be able to have engineers on board and, and get moving, and the plan was to bring back that project for the approval, and we would include options in there, so that then, that's how we would address that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and at that next meeting, then, what those projects closing out would look like if they extended past the closing of the agency would be helpful. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Patton, so non抵iable motion. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will see you at 7 o'clock for city council. Thank you, Cambie. Thank you, Camby.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting here this evening for, gosh, October 15th. October is...
Half over.
Half over? Well, the way I do my schedule at work, it is over. I'm already in November and December. But we're glad you're here, glad you're viewing at home. If you'll please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Dear mayor and father, thank you so much for this amazing community. I just want to take a moment and just give you praise and thanks for the current, hopefully, lengthy stay of trouble and conflict and war in the Middle East and for bringing both sides together to bring loved ones and home to their families. Just to offer these things to you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, I don't think we have any new employee introductions this evening. Mr. Ely. Opportunity for citizen input and community announcements, opportunity for citizens to address the council. Am I being fingered for something?
Point of order.
Yes?
Just one. Counselor Maldonado says he's connected yet. I don't see him on the screen.
I am here.
Oh, okay.
It could be that this camera isn't on.
Okay, well, usually there's a little box, so I was just wanting to make sure he can hear us.
Okay.
There's a box on my end.
Welcome, Counselor Maldonado.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, citizen input and community announcements, your opportunity to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are interested in addressing us, there are these fabulous little yellow cards back on the podium there behind Dr. Furman. Please fill it out, bring it to our deputy city recorder this evening, and she will make sure I get it for you to address us. If you have something on the agenda that you wish to do or make comment, we will reserve your card for that time. If you wish to, you're not able to make it down, but you want to tune in like Counselor Maldonado is on Zoom, please reach out to the City Hall, the deputy recorder or the city recorder by 4:30 on the day of the City Council meeting. I have one yellow card, and that is Dr. Furman with an update on his, on potential project or indoor possible U R D project, but I think we've covered that. So, Mr. Furman, your three minutes is yours.
Excellent. Thank you guys very much for the time to listen. Pass that down to Rose. First page has to do with the plat, which was also Patrick Sisal, so he's a very good engineering firm, because that's what he did with mine. Secondly, the second page, first page also shows the lot that I still think is valuable for the city of Camby to consider. Because we have, and I think it's been established back in several meetings, both of Parks and Recs and the City Council, that we lack public parking for access to the logging road on the south side of town. There is nothing to park in except for a couple lots in Timber Park. Timber Park can't be expanded either. It's got a dozen huge trees, and that's a community that's not going to want a parking lot that costs them 25 to 30 spaces for parking. Lot number five, up against and wedged against the logging road, right next to it is the cul-de-sac, and that's where everybody parks right now for the south side. All the elderly, I could bring in 30 elderly next time if you want, but I think we understand, I think both committees have agreed that there's lack of public parking by car to access the logging road. And ever since Third Court was built, Third Court has been in the cul-de-sac, and our personal parking areas continue to be the place to park for their access on the south side by car to get to the logging road. So, page two has a description of the schematic, so that you have bathroom, a metal bathroom, the second or third and fourth pages are very inexpensive, easy to maintain, water's already there at the lot, it's ready to go, along with 25 to 30 spaces that can be built in the parking lot. Just like the north. So, we have decent access, especially the kids with, oh, excuse me, the mothers that have kids to take and elderly, they're all driving on Third Court or indoor personal parking spots and around the industrial area parking spots also, along with other places across the street, because there is a lack of public parking on the south side of town. South side of town doesn't have any public property. You've got the neighborhood, you've got the school, you've got township, you could maybe get one off a township, but you'd be borrowing school property, and then you have to build a road to get up to the logging road. This lot, this road has served a purpose for thousands of people for 18 years, and that's not one pothole. It's been the access. I haven't done anything because there is no other access on the south side. That's why I haven't towed cars. We're here to serve the community, and we're here to make it so people can get to the logging road by car. That's it. So, I'm saying, unless you have an alternative location on the south side that can accomplish that goal to bring us public parking for the south side, I'm all ears. I want to hear your suggestion. If you, if this is not a plan, I would like your thoughts as to solve that issue, because this is an ideal situation to have parking up against a parking or logging road.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Appreciate the updated information.
I would like, hopefully, that you bring back a work session, and we can further discuss this. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the approval of the September 17th, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Patton to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
You should be.
Not always I.
I have, I have a new toy, and I don't, I don't know how to use it yet. I have to ask my teenage kids when I get home. It has been moved by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Patton to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the September 17th, 2025 City Council regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes six zero. Item five tonight is ordinances and resolutions. Item A is ordinance number 1657, an ordinance considering a contract extension with interim city administrator Randy Ely and declaring an emergency for second reading. Again, two weeks ago, we addressed the conversation of extending Mr. Ely's contract as her interim city manager to a date that will carry out to the end of the fiscal year, with the potential of maybe going beyond that if need be, as the council decides or as we feel that his work is not quite complete yet. There wasn't many changes to it, I think, to the contract, but we're glad that he's willing to stay on, and I think the council backs Randy 100% and the things he's got going on and the things he's working on. So, I really appreciate that piece. Do you have a question, sir?
No question. Ready for make a motion?
Fabulous, go for it.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1657, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator designated to enter into an amended employment contract between the city of Camby and Randy Eli declaring an emergency.
I'll second. Even with the emergency cost.
Motion's been made by Counselor Davis and then seconded by Council President Hensley to approve resolution 1657, an ordinance considering a contract extension with interim city administrator Randy Ely and declaring an emergency. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Davis?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Waterman?
Aye.
All right, motion carries six zero. Again, Randy, thank you. Appreciate the work that you've been doing, and I'm really glad that you've stepped in and have been helping out, so thank you. Item B is Consider Resolution Number 1444, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County related to the transfer of jurisdiction over a portion of North Pine Street. And I believe that that's Mr. Nellzine this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for letting me bring this to you tonight. You guys saw this a while ago. We brought it to you to, to take jurisdiction of North Pine Street from territorial and up to, just like prior to the train depot on Fourth Avenue. We, when we brought it back to the county, they asked us for, to bring, they were requesting a resolution from you, so we're back here. And I'm kind of excited, because Spencer presented last time, and it's the last county road, so I get to ask for it. So, no, pretty, pretty easy. You guys have been working on this for a long time. Brian, want to thank you for your help on it. It's kind of the last one. They, we, you asked me, I think, to negotiate a little more. We got some more money, and we're getting $513,000 to take that beautiful road over with a PCI rating, I think, of 40.
Isn't that, that's about $150,000 more than initially.
Yeah, it's, Mike Besner with Clackamas County was really helpful on this, too. He was great to work with and...
They really wanted to get rid of that portion of pine, huh?
Yep, and so, this is a good thing. I hope you guys pass this resolution. I've been working with the city administrator on getting going on engineering. I met with engineers yesterday, getting ready for an RFP. If you guys kind of just wanted to wait to make sure you wanted to take the road over before we spent any money on it. So, things are in motion. I'm here tonight for questions. You'll see the resolution, the I G A transfer in there with the, talking about the terms and everything else, the dry well, all the, if you want to read about dry wells and stuff like that, there's some great information on there. But other than that, this is a, this is a good thing, and I'm glad to be here, and I hope you approve it.
Randy, add anything? Oh, sorry. Questions of council?
Is the previous talk we've been hearing about the re-ensuring of Pine Street, that not included?
No, in that area, Counselor Waterman's actually in the city, so, but the, it's all going to fall into this, because once we take jurisdiction, I can get the sewer in. That area you're talking about is...
Going around the train depot?
Yeah, it's currently not served with sewer. There's people in there still on septic. So, this all kind of is a plan, working with the Traffic Safety Committee and a lot of steps, and we'll be keeping you posted on it, but this is the, the first one to get started.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ely.
Jerry, would you mind briefly describing on this map for those following along, what's happening here? The red versus the green?
Which map?
The one that's on the screen that everybody can see at home.
Okay, yeah, so, this is, we've almost completed 10th Avenue. As everyone knows, it's getting there. We're going to be hopefully paving next week, and so, this project kind of ties in with that. And so, the sewer stops at the apartments before the turn. I forget the name of the apartments. Counselor Hensley, do you remember?
The ones that I lived in?
Yeah.
Camby Garden.
Camby Garden. It's currently stops there, and it comes shallow up. It's a real rocky area, so back in the day, they didn't have equipment, so they ran sewer, as you can see, through the fairgrounds, under buildings and everything else. There's an 18-inch trunk that goes through there that I always lose sleep of during fare if that plugged and we had a problem. So, now, we have equipment, breakers, all that. We don't have to use dynamite. We can extend the sewer, and it's the red you'll see. And we got to go back to basically 11th Avenue and drop the sewer and relay it up, and we're going to go up to where Third and Fourth, the one-way comes together. That's where we are going to intercept it from going into the fairgrounds and grab sewer. We've planned, we've worked with the Event Center to, actually, they're, they're coordinating with us to, so we can bring sewer and put all that into this new trunk, and then we will have a plan to get all of that sewer out from underneath the fairgrounds and tie into this. And currently, we'll be able to serve the Bill Kaiser's building, the mechanic shop there by the train depot, the train depot, and Austin's Autobody, all of them, and any area for development there, this will be able to serve it. So, that's the next plan after we get this taken over.
So, what we're looking at here in the red is, is sewer realignment that'll occur once we get...
That's, that's the, currently, we have money budgeted $350,000, which is, I talked to the engineer, is plenty of money. We're not going to use that much to get the design and have them do the construction, help us with the management, and get it out to bed and build that. So, we're setting good on budget for that.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Nellzine? Okay, Mr. Patton, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I am always a fan of bringing in these streets. So, I move to adopt resolution number 1444, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County related to the transfer of jurisdiction over a portion of North Pine Street.
Motion's been made by Counselor Patton and seconded by Counselor Davis to approve resolution 1444, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County related to the transfer of jurisdiction over a north, over a portion of North Pine Street. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you, Jerry, for giving that last bid.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Crossed off my list.
Yep, done.
Thank you, sir. Next up is item C, resolution number 1445, a resolution granting authority to the city administrator to approve individual bankrupt financing request for system development
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of sorts of the discussion we've had for housing production strategy on October 1st, and this is one of those items that is a housing production strategy. I have Emma Porcolo, who's going to give the presentation tonight, but just wanted to say a few words around this. We feel like this tool is really important, and the city really doesn't lose anything in the process, given that there's prime interest rate that's, that's standard in the practice of allowing someone to pay SDCs over time. And we believe there's some benefit here as well for local developers in particular. We've seen this used previously by both multifamily use as well as for Dragonberry, so both commercial and multifamily have been able to use this, and we do, we do encourage you all to support this with the administrator having the authority over these, but with that provision that he or she in that position would have the ability to defer that to City Council. So, that's just a large overview of this. I'm going to let Emma get into the details of this, but just wanted to frame that up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We will try and keep this much briefer tonight. So, as Don mentioned, we are here to discuss the granting formal approval authority to allow bankrupt financing to the city administrator. So, we have proposed to do this by resolution, to formally grant the city administrator the ability to approve a bankrupt financing plan for development projects. And so, when we say bankrupt financing plan, that means the payment of SDCs over a set period of time of, you know, up to 10 years, and with the interest rate included. So, that's what we're talking about when we talk about a bankrupt financing plan. And as Don mentioned, we've kept in that the city administrator can still choose to defer that choice to City Council if they wish, but this is granting them the opportunity to make that approval, and I'll get a little bit more into the history of that and whatnot. So, as I mentioned, bankrupt financing is another term for SDC payment plan that we've called it. The Bancroft Bonding Act is the tool that allows local governments to finance SDCs through bonding, and it allows developments subject to SDCs to use the program to have a 10-year payment plan, to pay their required SDCs. So, some background on the bankrupt financing plans. We have two recent examples, or somewhat recent, in the last 10 to 15 years in the city that have been used in the past, and there's a good amount of detail in the staff report that Brianna Adada, who is also an associate planner, helped us out with. Those two projects in the past were Dragonberry in 2012 and Manzanita Apartments in 2023. Both of these were done at the staff level and granted by staff decision, including various staff, you know, at the director level, depending on which project it was, but both were approved at the staff level. So, for this proposal, there are several minimum requirements that would be checked before this would be brought to the city administrator. So, these are just reminders of the, a said project wouldn't even make it to the city administrator's desk until they meet at minimum these three requirements. So, the three requirements are to place a lien on another property owned by the developer, so basically, not placing a lien on the property where we're granting the payment plan. They have to own another property where we can place that lien to assure that the cost can be recouped if needed. The second is agree to the payment plan set by the city, so the city chooses the duration, sets the interest rate based on prime interest rates, and, you know, chooses how many payments a year, and can choose how many years it's for as well, though the state law grants us up to 10 years. And the last one is to complete the SDC installment and financing agreement. That was included in the staff report, and that is the legal document that was drafted with help from B E H that outlines all of the requirements of this... with help from BEH that outlines all of the requirements of this agreement in detail that, that both the city and the property owner of the development pursuing the Bancroft financing would be subject to and agreed to. So as you may recall, at the last council meeting, the housing production strategy was adopted. This is a tool within the housing production strategy that was included and was recommended for, to be prioritized for entry-level homes and to addressing lower rents. So tonight, we're, we're not here to confirm the use of this, but to confirm who has the authority to grant the decision for our project to use it. We believe it's really important for housing production, thus why it was included in the housing production strategy. You know, we've seen it used for multifamily project, which was 23 units that Don mentioned that was used a couple of years ago. And it, the, but it's important to mention that although we think it's really important and should be prioritized for housing, that doesn't mean that it couldn't be used for other types of projects in the future. So it could still be used for non-residential, commercial, industrial projects as well, but it is recommended to be prioritized for the entry-level and lower rent projects. We have some information here to kind of ground truth what we're saying from a local developer about the benefits of the program. So they said, "Having the SDC costs spread out spreads out the SDC costs over time and bridges the gap between construction and sales, making the cost of entry-level homes at a price point that is entering into the market, that those entering into the market can afford." My experience with townhome sales is there is two dominant purchasing groups, first-time buyers and those nearing or in retirement. Both of these groups are highly vulnerable to increased costs. I will also mention here, in the past and generally, you know, what we've seen is these are local developers or, you know, smaller developers that are seeking the use of this program, not so much your, you know, your big-time, large companies. We haven't seen an interest in those in the past. We, we've really had the conversations generally with more smaller, local developers that, you know, don't quite have that huge financial backing, but could use a little bit extra help just to make, you know, the costs way out in the near term. So that brings me to the conclusion in which we staff are recommending that council approve Resolution 1445 to grant the city administrator the authority to approve the use of the Bancroft financing plan for a payment plan for SDC fees. And to reiterate why, we believe that it would be beneficial to have the city administrator approve it. This has been done historically in the past and has been supported. It has limited to no financial impact as, you know, the costs are being recuperated. Just the timeline at which they're being provided can change. It can help produce housing as well as be used for a variety of projects. It's an efficiency way, right, in reducing the amount of folks that need to be involved in conversations and meetings. And last, you know, the city administrator reserves the discretion to defer to council. So if they believe that it's not the right project or overly complicated or for whatever reason, right, they still have that choice to then defer to you all to make the decision. And at the end, we have one more slide. So this here is just a sample table of what the payment plan would look like. And so the full cost is calculated. So here, the complete loan amount is $337,000, and then that complete amount with interest and all is broken up into 20 equal payments over 10 years, so two payments a year. And so you can see that here in the payment column.
And just to add, this is not new to our finance department as well. This has worked seamlessly for the last two that have been done in terms of the process here and backed up by a contract document and lien, as Emma has mentioned.
That concludes our presentation.
Emma, can you go back, please, to the slide that broke down? I think that, no, one more. Nope.
Go back to the beginning. Start over.
One more?
This is the one. So again, which we had passed on today, some questions, and one of them being about the person that came a couple of weeks ago and how would this apply there? And I think you cited, or it was cited that number two, sorry, number one, that they just need, they need to have another property to put the lien on. The, when it's, so under item two, when it says the city chooses the duration, is that, like, going back to the example you shared, so that could have been, it's how many, how long based on making two payments a year? Or can it be a larger, you could say 10 years?
10 years is the maximum, so it's, it could be less, though. So to that point, I mean, and I think from a developer perspective, they probably would want to have it less. I mean, I think some of these are in for 10, but the folks we're currently speaking to that are interested in this were planning to do it in a shorter term, even though they'd be locked in for 10. There's no prepayment penalty.
Okay, so no, so they could pay it off quicker if they were doing that? Okay. And then I think one of the other questions we had was that the, it all stays within the SDC, so the interest that builds up on that amount, it all stays within that?
It does. It stays in the fund, so it would just accumulate and actually add more to that fund.
Thank you. That's the other question. Any other?
I'm clarifying, just to make sure I understand that I've heard everything. The agreement to payment plan says it's set by the city. The city chooses duration, interest rate, and payment plan. But we're also saying we want to have the administrator be the one that decides. So is, is the council set the payment plan parameters and then the administrator decides who gets it? Or does the administrator also decide these parameters?
The administrator would decide the parameters and the authorization. Or they could defer that, and I think the defer, I would say in most cases, if it's a small, this is my personal perspective on this, if it was a small amount, you know, something less than, you know, half a million dollars or less, that seems a fairly easy ask. If this was multiple millions of dollars, which I would believe that probably would be more the large-time developers, to Emma's point, instead of the smaller developers, if that was something of that scale, and if I was the administrator, I probably would send it to council. That would just, that's my take on, that gives that authority to allow the administrator to do that. But on a smaller scale, it gets into a lot of minutia that, like, I think you all probably have more other things on your plate to deal with, yeah.
Okay, I was just wanting to clarify, because at first I was like, well, do we just set the plan and then he decides if it's administered or not, or so that makes, that
I would just add that I think it's fair to assume that nine times out of 10, 10 years would be the standard and, you know, only in a few. And, right, because there's no prepayment penalty as a developer, it's advantageous to say, yeah, sure, I'll choose the longest and then see what happens over time.
Gotcha. Perfect. That clears it, clears it right up for me. Thank you.
Council Sterns and then Council Davis. Oh, okay. Yes, you're Council Sterns.
Sorry.
It's been a long day.
First question is more about the deferrals to the city council. Is that going to be, like, Randy says no, and then the guy says, well, I'll go to the city council and ask them? Or is it more like, I'm not, Randy says, I'm not sure if I should do such a big thing. I'm giving the city council an opportunity. I mean, are we, is the council going to be like an appeal? Or are we, is the council going to be, you know, is that going to be like, how's, how's that work? That's one, like, questions.
I would, I would say that it would be in a situation, not so much as an appeal, but rather as that, this kind of gets into the discretionary authority over expenditures and those kinds of things. But I think if it had a financial implication for the city and its operation, I would assume the administrator would make that decision in that context. And that would have to do with their overall budget. If it's something small and does not materially affect the operation, if it affected other things like capital expenditures on a large scale, I would say that would be something the administrator would send. I don't see this as an appeal process, though. I think it's an either-or. He says, I'm going to take it, or you're going to take it. And that's, that's the end of it.
Okay, man. And the one other question I had on that, I mean, that's, thanks for that, answer that question. The other question I have is, I'm curious, and is more curious, we want to lien on the, on another piece of property somewhere out there. Why not put a lien on both properties, one in the other property and the one on the city and what, you know, because that way, that means that if any kind of sales or anything would require full payment to the city and accelerate the payment that way. So I'm just curious why, because if you have some other land, piece of land somewhere else that they never plan on selling, then it may be a long time getting the money if they default.
I think that's a great question. I think my two answers are, one, from a value perspective, if the lien on the separate property from the property that's doing the borrowing, so to speak, if that value is equivalent or more, you know, than the value of the borrow, that satisfies that situation, and that's, that's what we're suggesting. I think if we make this really onerous and lien both properties, I don't think we're going to be using this very much. I don't think people really like putting liens on their property. So, and our attorneys were suggesting as well that it would be on a free and clear property that could be leamed, value equal to or greater than, which is the case that you'll see. If this does happen, the first one that would be using this process would have a greater value than the value of the amount that's being loaned over time.
Yeah, I can see that for big projects. I'm thinking of the one that came, my mind keeps going to the one that came through, because I know that that's resolved, but I'm thinking the next person on that issue, if they don't have any other property to lien, I don't, might be something to consider.
I, I think it's, the financial risk here is that the city is not out anything when we have backup security. It's kind of like you buying a house and what is, it's very similar in that sense, like, what do you have to back that up? It's, we're kind of acting as, in some ways, like a banker here, that that, that supports that, that risk if, if somebody did not fulfill that. I think the chances of that going poorly are not good. You know, I think we would not see, see those situations, in my opinion, because of the limited use of this, but it also.
Did you? No, I'm ready to make a motion whenever you're ready. Question or?
Any question?
Yes, sir.
So I assume, so I, in reading through this, I don't see anywhere where if someone chooses to do this, that they pay, pay a fee to go through this process. Is there a fee or no fee?
There's not a fee to go through this process.
Okay, so where, so that gives me, that gives me a little bit of harper, because we have been talking about trying to capture the costs of operations. And in doing this, there would be time spent by staff to evaluate the thing, draw up the contract, and now we're administering payments every so often, so there's postage and there's all this stuff, right? And so to me, it seemed, to me, it would make sense to have some sort of fee associated with going through this process that does not go into the SDC funds, but goes towards the general fund to help cover the cost of administering something like this.
Yes, Mr. Ely.
I would just offer, that's an excellent point, Counselor. We earn at the local government investment pool 4.6% of our money, roughly 4.6%, and in this model, we're charging 7.6% over 10 years. So that would be what we would put forth as our fee that we're earning, if you will, in this case.
But that would go into the SDC fund?
Yes.
Into overhead?
Correct.
So, like, court charges a fee for a payment plan that goes to administration? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, essentially, because like, yes, I, I agree that the money that's being raised in interest should go to that, but at the end of the day, we're still having staff spend general fund money on administering the thing. And most of the other things that we do has some sort of fee associated with. I'm not talking about like an outrageous fee, but at least it's something that will at least capture some of the cost and spent on that, because the city administrator's going to have to spend time doing that. That's a high salary position. The.
Planning director.
Planning director is going to have to do that, sorry. And, and all those staff members are going to have to spend time. And then our billing department is going to be needing to make sure that that is billed and collected and all those other things. So to me, I don't know what other people on the council think, but to me, it seems reasonable that there would be some sort of fee associated with, with doing that, and that would be added to our fee schedule so that every year it was increased along with all the other fees that we, that we, that we have.
I'm going to go, Emily, and then I'll come up for you.
I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Okay, Emily?
That's a good point about capturing administrative costs. When I've written these in the past for other clients, I have tied it into the 10-year fully amortizing rate plus an extra 2, 1%, 2%, as high as we can negotiate, administrative fee, clearly goes towards administration to capture that administrative overhead. So it would be based on the outstanding balance. So, you know, it would go down as payment goes down, which may not act, may not be the best way to capture administrative costs, because your administrative costs are going to be steady, right, rather than decrease as the amount of the principal decreases.
Yeah, I guess, I think, great question, Council Patton, and yours as well tonight, Council Sterns, that I wonder if there would be a way, if it's, are there, I guess, government, we get in funding sources, and all of our budget funds are very siloed. Would there be a way that instead of adding a fee on to the developer that's, you know, putting us through the basis of going through and getting the Bancroft, you know, financing, if at the end of the loan that's paid off, is there a way that can be written to where, you know, say it's $1,000, you know, once it's completed, move from the SDC to the general fund? That's.
You could also, like Council Patton was saying, do it through the master fee schedule where there's a fee that says that everyone who is a party to a Bancroft agreement at the first billing of each calendar year has an extra X dollar, number of dollars tacked onto that billing cycle to cover administrative costs for that year.
That seems cleaner to me than trying to do a SDC arrangement, because SDCs are pretty saddled.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah. Like, I, again, again, trying to think of a way to answer your, you know, create a solution that isn't, you know, again, depending on what, I mean, do we have any idea thumbnail, just ballpark, like what it would cost to administer this, this fund?
I, I mean, I could say, I could see that this could be, I mean, we have a template now, but, I mean, because of our attorneys, but I, I think this could be a couple thousand dollars over the life of the process. I mean, I mean, I don't think it's a large amount, but it's a good point.
So I wasn't too far off with the $1,000.
Maybe like an initial application fee, because that's where your review costs are going to come in at the outset, and then a yearly administrative fee following that.
Okay. Yes, now Council Waterman.
So if it's going to go on the master fee schedule, then technically, we would want to make sure that the interest or the index would take that into account so that every year that we're, we're not getting, ending back up with a thing where, you know, 10 years down the road, we're still charging 10-year-ago prices.
Right.
Right, so.
Okay. Yes, Council Patton.
So I guess the read that I'm getting from, the consensus that I'm getting from this is that there is some interest in, in establishing a fee for, I didn't think about annual fee. I was thinking just a one-time fee, but I like the annual fee thing, because then you're capturing, so you might have, the initial fee might be lesser because now, because the whole thing is we're trying to make this, like, we don't want to fee them to death, right? So if we do a smaller initial, like, this is your application fee, and then each year we're going to do a small fee, so that way we're capturing those costs over the, over the whole period of the loan, that seems a little more reasonable than like saying, you know, we're going to charge you a $1,000 to do the whole thing. Is there, would there be a way of amending this resolution to say the council wants to see fees, a, like, a loan origination fee and then a annual maintenance fee established? And just let you folks figure that out with a, or do we need a whole new thing?
I don't think you need a new resolution, because it sounds like what consensus or tentative interest here is to do it via the master fee schedule. So this resolution, and Donnie can tell me if I'm being too limited, is just giving the city administrator reins over the process of actually executing the agreement. So this administration fee idea that we're looking at isn't part of the city administrator, administrator, sorry, criteria for evaluating whether to grant the agreement or not, or terms of the agreement itself. It's just an additional fee on, that'll go straight into the master fee schedule. So we could do that via separate resolution. I don't think you need to change this resolution in order to pursue that avenue.
Okay, I like it.
Council, Council, Council President Hensley?
With that in mind, if we approve this and we give him the reins to take care of this program, how soon are we going to, as? how soon are we going to, as a body, this is kind of asking my colleagues, how soon are we going to want to add that to and do an amendment to the fee schedule? Because an developer could come down the road in a couple of months, and we're not going to revisit the fee schedule until June, so.
You do a spot update. You don't have to crack open the old, whole thing.
No, I was just wondering if this body was wanting to do, revisit that, just do an amendment right away.
I think that would be proven, that's a good point. Counselor Waterman?
I like the annual part two, because there's also the fact that you may deny them. And so, you put in all the work, do all the research, and then you deny them, and then it's like, well...
Counselor Waterman, can you turn on your mic?
Sorry. Having the administrative fee over time and lowering the cost upfront, per se, because if you're, we also have the opportunity to deny them as well. So, but we still have to do a bunch of work in order to figure out whether it's something that we're going to do or not. And so, if we deny them, and then we say, oh, it's a $1,000 fee, but now I don't, I don't actually get to use the thing, that seems a little unfair as well. So, if the fee upfront is capturing the cost of the, doing the research, whether it's approved or not, it's non-refundable, I guess you could say, then, then that covers that, and then also the administration down the road.
Can I add one statement to that, Counselor Waterman? It's actually a great point as well of the trying not to set too, you know, too much cost upfront in that, you know, there are also application fees that are usually charged at the same time as SDCs, and those are explicitly not included in this. So, you could have application fees up to 20, 30 above that they have to pay still upfront, even if they opt into this plan and aren't allowed to opt into this plan. So, I think we should keep that in mind as well as we're thinking about how these fees factor, because that, you know, could become prohibitive at the onset of the project, too.
And maybe just another thought here is that it's not necess, I mean, this goes back to the administrator, you know, or the council, but not every decision that comes through a review process is an approval. I mean, that's the presumption, but that, there's some risk in this as well. So, I, I mean, I, to your point, Counselor Waterman, I think we need to be reasonable about what that is. We clearly, as staff, could come back with, the two things I'm hearing is annual review fee and a loan origination fee, and amend the master fee schedule to add that on. I think that's a fair way to do it, and I do agree that that's easier than this SDC borrowing thing, which sounds like a lot of legal discussion around that, which we would avoid if we just had it in the master fee schedule.
Perfect. Just again, trying to come up with, you know, ideas to be able to, because I like the idea, because we've been having that conversation every budget year about recouping, you know, planning department costs, building department, like, all of that, and we're not necessarily trying to make money on that. We just want to be able to cover the cost of doing this program. So, I like what has come up tonight, so that's perfect, I like it. Any other questions for staff before I ask Counselor Davis for his motion?
I'm good.
Okay. Counselor Davis, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution, 1445, a resolution granting, granting authority to the city administrator to...
Favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Pass is 6-0, perfect. Thank you both. Yeah, thank you, Don, thank you, Emma. Great job.
Good job, Emma, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ely, do we have any old business?
I don't think I see anything on here, so I'm just...
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any new business?
I don't see any.
Not seeing anything there either. Look at that. Item 8, mayor's business.
You don't have any business.
I do this time. Two things, really, I'll keep it brief. I just want to say thank you to Clackamas County for finishing up Knightsbridge Road on time.
Yay.
People were asking.
Applause.
Applause, seriously.
Love it.
You know, I know at the outset of the project, I think we were joking like, so really it'll be like the end of October. So, they, it is done, Knightsbridge Road is open. Please go back to your normal commute, because coming through Barlow has been challenging. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee met, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee met a couple of weeks ago, two big things. One, we spent a lot of time reviewing the passage of the recent $4.6 billion transportation bill. Did I get the number right, 4.6?
4.3.
Oh, it was only 4.3, okay. So, 4.3 billion transportation bill. And then the other piece, we spent a lot of time talking about, and this might be something, Randy, that might be an interest of topic of conversation in a work session. And it was talking about the emergency response routes. In, and so, they're specifically around Portland and the metro area. But I think it wouldn't be a bad conversation for us to have with maybe Camby Fire and Camby PD on, you know, in an emergency, what are those routes? What do we have? I mean, again, the bulk of the conversation was kind of identifying what those routes were and are, but again, it depends on the disaster that might be going on and what's open and where people need to go, but at least having that conversation of, I go back to the wildfires and how are people being directed, you know, away from, or what were those routes that people, that way, kind of, one, yeah, refresher conversation for us, but also the community, in the instance that those things happen again. You know, or road closures that'll occur to be able to funnel traffic, just the various, you know, again, it's not a hard and fast concrete rule that this is what, this is how people will come in and out of Camby, but at least these are the possibilities of what would occur. It might be worth a conversation with them, you know. Yeah, it wasn't, we did have that conversation as a response, as a community, like, because we did, we, we opened up, once the new barn is, and building is built, that'll be a tremendous addition out there to the, the event center. But it was less about, like, what to do in that instance, but more about how do we move people? Because like, the big conversation became about, like, so if there's a Cascadia event, you know, and everybody, the nearest airports that are going to get functionality are going to be Redmond and Bend airports, so how do you best, what are those routes going to look like as people are evacuating the valley to go that direction? But then you've got emergency vehicles coming that direction, this way. And so, it was just more about what, what would routes potentially look like? It's not an urgent, but I think, you know, maybe something in the beginning of the new year might be worthwhile to have that conversation. Yes, Counselor Patton?
Something that I would throw in there is that, and I don't know if this already exists, but I would like to see agreements with ODOT and such, that if there is something like that that happens, that Camby PD, Camby Fire have more sway in what happens on the, like, 909E? Because I, one of the things that I see constantly in these things is jurisdiction things, and it's like, if they need to be able to turn 909E into, you know, two lanes out going both ways, they do not, they should not need to spend three hours trying to find somebody at ODOT to give them the permission to put down those cones. They need to be able to do it. So, that's something I would just throw out there as a thought.
Ah, local control, what a novel idea.
Man, snow cones just don't have a chance.
The other piece that I wanted to share with the council and the general public, I was talking with Brian Crowe from the event center, and they have received a really big grant to be able to replace all the wood planking in the rodeo arena, and they will be able to go to all aluminum seating. And I think they're just condensing a couple of areas and changing some things up, but it's a pretty sizable grant to help pay for that project. So, the Camby crazies won't get splinters on their backside sitting at the rodeo, so. But I just wanted to share that, I thought that was good news on that front. So, that's all that I have right now. We'll start with Counselor Waterman for liaison reports.
I was messing with the Bike and Ped group just last night, and definitely some of the big topics is...
Counselor Waterman, microphone?
One of the big topics at the Bike and Ped was, is still the safety, speed, et cetera. There's, they have a letter come in to them from a citizen concerning the speed of bikes on the path. And so, continued talk with them coming in about signage in, et cetera, on the bike path. We had Chris, I'm sorry, I forget his last name. I guess it's going to be next council meeting. So, to approve, the recommendation to approve him to the Bike and Ped Committee, unless that's coming up later, I'm not sure, I didn't see that.
Here's John consenting to general.
That, huh?
They usually do it on consent at night.
Yeah, so that would, yeah, so that, so that'll be next week, or next meeting. So, he attended last night, and it's been interviewed, and the recommendation will be coming in for him. And, okay, that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sterns?
I attended the Camby Utility Board meeting last night, and it turns out that for the next 20 years, we're going to be, our utilities are going to be buying power from BPA. They were shocking and surprised, suspense was great on that, but they, they, they're going to sign a contract, a long-term contract for, with BPA for the power, but that doesn't, so, and they said that BPA has plenty of power to give us. It's just I think the line that goes from them to us is too skinny, so that still needs to be resolved. The, all the other thing I'd just like to say in my, my comments is, street maintenance fee. I'm just going to put that out there again, because it's been about six months since they told us it was going to be done in two weeks.
It's been two weeks since you got an update on that, Daniel.
Yes, I'm just going to keep it up there. I'm keeping it up there on the, on the, on the schedule. I'm just saying, it's the longest thing, it's been about almost two years now. I think it started when I started on the council. And that's it.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Okay, Park and Rec doesn't meet until next week at Public Works at 6:30. And so, no real report or update from my last report from Park and Rec. Camby Adult Center, no report from that. They were holding their annual strategic planning process that they do every year. And that's taking place, I believe, this week. And no other reports from my committees. I would like to report that a few days ago, I learned that the director at CCOM, Cheryl Blitso, she's been there for quite a while, has done an excellent job as the director, but she passed away unexpectedly. Yeah, and so, keep her, her and her family in your thoughts and prayers.
Yep, thanks. Counsel President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not attend to Seaford, as you know. I was at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. A lot of good nuggets there, a lot of crazy things that kind of happened, too, but we'll get into that another day. Kind of fun walking around there on Friday with Randy, though. It was like I was walking around with a rock star. Everybody knows Randy, so that was kind of fun. Yeah. Traffic Safety Committee, Commission, sorry. Some reoccurring conversations, they're talking about second and grant again. There's going to be some, hopefully, some movement on getting some of that debris, if you will, vacated, abandoned vehicles and whatnot on the property. Hopefully, they'll get that moved out of the way, because it's become a site restriction. Also, the conversation on red flags cameras has been revisited, so we'll see what that comes forward. We did have a citizen come in and talk about the construction, the Tramacrow project. Apparently, there's trucks being queued in the middle lane between, between their property and the cemetery on Sequoia Parkway. That's been a concern. I mean, they're also worried about traffic going forward, but we told them that we don't know who the tenants will be yet, so that will be a future conversation. But their current issue is the queuing of dump trucks in the middle lane, which is causing an issue. And I think that, that's it for that one for right now. There's a couple of other conversations going on, but nothing really to report on it. Wanted to thank the chamber, they did a chamber luncheon last week was good. We had the school update from the superintendent, so she came and did a state of the school talk. That was good, and I do have a meeting, she's on my calendar for next week. So, I'll be talking with her as I'm the liaison to the school district. And October, okay, Suicide Prevention Task Force, I wanted to remind everybody that they're hosting the QPR training here at the library, October 22nd, from 5:30 to 7:00. I believe it's in the Big Willamette Room. So, that, I hope everybody, I encourage everybody to attend to that. It's a free training, so anybody who wants to have words to say, if you have a friend who might be in need of some encouragement, I really do recommend that training. And finally, October, everyone knows it as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but I want to remind everybody, it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and there are resources. So, there's a Safe Place, it's called that, in Oregon City. And then we also have for resources and also counseling, Living Waters of Hope is right here in Camby. So, if you or someone you know needs those kinds of resources, reach out. I'll be glad to help you get connected with those folks. It's just really important to know that there's help out there, you're not alone. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Maldonado, any comments?
I do not have any report. I do have, I would like to say one thing, however, I'd give a huge shout out to the library. Their events have been absolutely amazing lately. I, I unfortunately have not been able to go to them, but my son has been really, really enjoying them. This recent one was with some birds of prey, and he got to get pretty up close and personal with some falcons, some owls and what have you, and I just want to give them a huge shout out. They are kicking butt. If you get a chance, check their schedule out for any upcoming events.
Okay, perfect.
Kudos to the library.
Thank you, sir. And finally, Counselor Patton?
Yes, so, due to work, travel, which has been disgusting, and I traveled like 3,000 miles in seven days last week. I am just about done with all of that. And it is volley, it is girls volleyball season, which I, people might not know, I'm actually a volleyball official, so that's going until state finals on the weekend of November 7th and 8th. I have been a horrible slacker and have not been able to attend any of my liaisons, so I will be duly chastised later because of that. I will say that, yes, Knightsbridge is open for those that choose to speed. It's been blissful these last few months, because there has been very little traffic on North Bird Street, and all of that came to a crashing halt this morning as I watched traffic go by. I do work in my yard quite often, and so speeding tends to startle me, and if I happen to have a cultiv, hand cultivator, or a shovel, or a brick, it might end up in the road, so do be warned about that. And to the person who blows their horn by my house when I park my car near the speed hump so that they cannot try and divert half of it, I am watching for you, and you are on my list.
Sorry, Counselor Patton, I'll stop.
And then, I think, oh, one last thing, I just wanted to be sure. We had a Goals and Operating Guidelines meeting a few weeks ago, and something was mentioned about the fifth was when that might be coming up. Is that still the target, to have that, all that ready to go?
Yes.
Fantastic. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Item 10, Administrator Business and Staff Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Couple documents we wanted to share with you. Don, if you wanted to come on up. We had a meeting with Camby Utility and Portland General Electric last week. And Teresa, I don't know if you have the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, take our time here. It was just a, it was a nice level-set meeting with Camby Utility, Jason was there.
Jason was there, their operations manager, and also the business development team for Portland General Electric, that does all the planning for their load growth. And so they, we talked about how we could meet regularly going forward, create a cadence. I'm actually meeting with the new general manager, that's being set up for next week.
It's on six, per one.
On October 28th or 29th. And the deliverable that they asked for from us is just sort of a yardstick of a pipeline, which Don is going to share with you all, for what's been approved, what's in process, and what the last three years of pre approvals look like. And then, ultimately, what we, what's not on this is what growth looks like in our urban growth boundary expansion areas. So, Don, just really briefly, do you want to share what we're building?
Absolutely. Teresa, could you just lower that slightly? It's a really big, I'm not planning to go into detail here because we'd be here all night.
It's a really.
But it's going to be high, high level, and I'll frame this for you. So, as Randy was mentioning, we met with PG&E, or PGE, and to talk about several things. One is, what do we have in pipeline? Pipeline meaning land uses that have been approved, land use development decisions that have been approved, and subdivisions that have been approved. So we've accounted for that in the spreadsheet. We've also accounted for in-process projects that have not yet been approved but are on their way to being approved, some by the Planning Commission, some would be administratively approved. And then third is pre-application conferences that we've had in the last three years. So this first lens is intended to be forwarded to Cub, Canby Utility, to request, can they serve all these, these developments? We know that there's still some challenges with the BBC Steel project, but the other ones we're anticipating can be served. Secondly, PGE has asked for what I'm going to call a model of our vacant buildable land that we have available for residential, commercial, and industrial. We have that information from our buildable lands analysis. And to then apply assumed densities for residential on those properties, and then to apply a mix of employment uses on industrial properties, for example, warehousing and manufacturing. And then for commercial, similarly, the kind of the commercial land use activities. And then there's metrics that PGE will give to us that will help formulate what the ultimate demand is for power for the city, and that's for the city limits and the current urban growth boundary. We will also be looking at the future boundary, which we have yet to have a full discussion with council on yet, but we know what's being studied, and in particular, the likelihood of expanding the employment areas in specific are likely to occur, based on the need from the economic opportunity analysis that we have already adopted. So that would be the other part of this. And this all will generate the power need, and then from there, that would be something that PGE and Bonneville would be working with Cub and us on a solution for the long term. So we have a near term with the spreadsheet, which is really kind of the more urgent issue, which is, I mean, everything's urgent, but this is because we're continually having to go through, and if someone applies for a land use activity, we don't really have a choice but to approve that in the current circumstance that we're in. So trying to figure out where we're at, how much capacity is still remaining in the system, and that's really a big part of what's being discussed now. So that's kind of the framework here. Glad to answer questions. And there's a lot to this spreadsheet, and I wasn't planning to go through that tonight with you all, but just to show you what this looks like.
As Teresa scrolls through the categories, so if you could go back, Teresa, the first, the first category, that we got a thumbs up from PGE and Canby Utility was number one here. We shared that with them, outstanding projects with approved, design review. And we'll get you hard copies of this, by the way, through email. And then the second, and BBC Steel, positive, if they could do a flex load, so they're looking into that, flex load. Outstanding subdivisions, category number two. Don, any, any comments on category number two?
Just that there are a number of lots that are in final planning now. Those generally are part of the load growth, natural load growth. There's still another 49 lots that Mark's Place has not developed yet. So we're tracking what those are, and they have, they have preliminary land use approval, but they've not done a final plat. So we're just, we're trying to, this is fairly granular, and we're trying to get down to exactly what has been approved and what's pending. And it's multi-layered.
Hope Village and Canby Senior Living, Memory Care, category number three.
Those are small project additions for amenities, community center, 8,000 square foot community center, delivery intake, basically they're not adding units at this point.
So I appreciate Don and his team's work. They've rolled everything up into one comprehensive spreadsheet that we can deliver over, and keep workshopping this over with Jason and Canby Utility. So everything's kept in one, you know, localized tracker, if you will. And then the UGB expansionary would be a second piece as well. And then lastly, number four, outstanding pre-op projects, and then individual sublots, so a lot of good detail here, Don, appreciate it. Any questions, or, sorry, Mayor, I didn't want to take your role here, facilitate.
No, no, I, the, it's, it's some interesting things here too, because that's always something I think that we, if we are not following the Planning Commission, I don't know if we necessarily know that a lot of these projects are on the docket. At least, sorry, we used to have that knowledge, I think earlier on, when back, when you were probably on, and when we were first on. I appreciate this breakdown because at least it's, gives us that bird's eye view of what's going on and what's coming up. You know, and like I'm intrigued now by this whole, multi, what does it say? Multi, nope, you're good, don't move.
You're good, back, Teresa.
Right there, perfect.
He just has to focus.
Yeah. I'm AG, the multi-tenant commercial remodel at Ace Glass.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, you know, kind of a, a, a big deal for sure, so. And then, again, seeing the housing development, so no, great job. I know it's a huge spreadsheet as I'm looking at it, at the, on the table there, Don, but just to have it, to be able to scroll through, and for us to just kind of stay in the loop on some of those things is really great. Counselor Patton, and then Counselor, was it Counselor Sterns, did you have her hand up?
Yeah, so, thank you very much for putting this together. Couple of things. One, is there something to preclude us from getting this document on like a monthly or quarterly basis?
We clearly, yeah, this, it's not a problem at all. I mean, this is the beginning of the, I, I think that we're in a tracking mode, and this is the beginning of that tracking, yes.
Yeah, this is awesome. And I will just say, you know, this is going back to when my time on the Planning Commission, you know, this is something that I think, even as a Planning Commissioner, we would get updates of what was in the pipeline, but we never got a real clear picture of what everything was coming. And so I think this is, it would be a valuable document for the folks at the Planning Commission as well, so that they can really see, because sometimes they would get, I know it, sometimes they would get a little persnickety about the fact that, you know, well, what is going on? What is out there? When are we going to see these things? And I think this would, would, would help them as well. With the understanding that, you know, some of this stuff, you know, can't be talked about at this point in time, those sort of things, but, but yeah, I think having this information is fantastic. And, the other part is, this, I'm assuming, is going towards making sure that PG&E is up to date with what we are planning, correct?
And that, they were requesting this. They said this is, you know, we didn't, from the work session we all had with Bonneville and PGE and Cub, I mean, really, they're kind of high level alluded to this, but the groundwork is the true thing that we're doing here with their help. I mean, and I do appreciate Randy and his connections again, because I think it's helped a lot to have these folks at the table who he knows personally, and I think the metrics of this are really important to establish really clearly, because this stuff is really tricky. Like, if we, you know, there will be a bright line at some point. We know that bright line is 1 megawatt or greater power is a problem right now. Is it, are there circumstances where lesser amounts is a problem? And this, this sorts that out, this is what's necessary to get to that point.
Yes, and I think to that point, one of the things that they had sort of said when they were here was, shame on you for not letting us know that you were planning to grow. You should have let us know more regularly that you were growing. And so hopefully this serves as that letter, to let them know that we are.
It does, and I think we're all in this together, and, I mean, I don't, wouldn't necessarily want to espouse a large philosophical bent tonight.
That's fine, you don't have to. I will lay that.
But from a statute perspective, it is a bit odd that, that cities are being asked to do this, is all I'm going to say. Because it's from a statute perspective, utilities are supposed to be planning this out for cities. What a shocker.
I appreciate that. Clearly I'm still cheesed about the whole thing, and I'll get over here in the next three to five years. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is great. Counselor Sterns?
Back to this whole thing about power, do they have a column in there, or you can put on there that says what the power that they're going to be requesting for each of these projects?
That's the next step, so this is, this is the first beginning of this, and I, I think that, I believe this shortlist here that, of the pipeline will be earmarked where we're, I think there will be assumptions that Cub will have to make on that about what, what these are. That's, that's the next step, in terms of this list. And yes, the answer is yes, absolutely. They're going to have to make some assumption on what the power need is, and this is way beyond my technical expertise on what load growth is, and like why that is, the natural load growth is much less of an issue than, obviously, the large users are putting a high demand on peak loads is the critical issue, but my understanding is the load growth, which what we're talking about, natural growth, does not have that same effect. And so, but how that gets quantified, that's the next step, absolutely, is for Cub to, they're going to need to do some assignment on this, because ultimately this will be a cumulative impact between the pipeline that we have, and then the projections for vacant buildable lands. Then that all kind of comes to a formula, and I think it'll help us plan in the future as to what that should be, and what the limitations are.
Okay. Well, I mean, because I, in the past life, studied a lot of electrical engineering, and the, 2,500,000 kilowatt loads, it does equal 1 megawatt of load capacity if you're, for, you know, working out what the load limits are, and the laws of physics are going to have a certain upper limit to what kind of load that can, that can be transmitted over those lines, and it'd be nice to know that number. And that should be something that PGE probably already knows. And I know that some of the factor on what kind of transformers, it's not just the line itself, but it'd be nice to be able to have some sort of idea of, hey, we're going to need a higher, you know, higher transmission line, higher wattage transmission line, around however many years it will be, and then we start planning and stuff to, to build and pay for it. And then, so that's one thing, the last question I ask, how is, are we still in the moratorium thing? Or is, I think the last time we voted was for maybe a possibility, maybe, to possibly sometime put a, investigate whether we should have a moratorium, but I don't know if that's officially in there or not, or if there's, that's still being investigated, or maybe I'm just misremembering the whole conversation.
And so I'll, I'll answer, and Randy may have some more commentary. This is really to determine, like, what are the limits, and should there be a moratorium filed? Department of Land Conservation has been given notice that we are considering as a city, a moratorium. That's as far as this has gone. The challenging part here is that it's not easy to do a moratorium without very, very specific bright lines on what can and cannot be served. And that's, that's, that's the challenge here. And I think that this is going to help to get a bit further into the weeds about, like, where are we at as a baseline situation, and to truly be able to identify where those, those, those limits are. I'm not sure if Cub can really tell us where those limits are at this point, they don't have this, this information. So it's, it's a bit complicated on that situation. I think part of it is, yes, there's a, there's a challenge. We know there's a challenge for heavier loads, absolutely. It's, it's more like, how do we scale this? And, and it's a bit iterative with PGE and Bonneville and kind of Cub, and how this all kind of plays out here. And I think if this list on pipeline can mainly be served, let's say all, but, you know, and hopefully BBC Steel, is what Randy said, can be served, that solves a huge short-term issue, and then we're looking at more of a longer-term issue.
Appreciate our friends at Canby Utility, and looking forward to meeting the new general manager. Maybe we could have her over and introduce her to the council. Sorry.
Counselor Warren.
Do, do SDCs? Sorry, sorry, Counselor Maldonado.
I'm so excited, it's not me.
Do SDCs take into account the, our electrical infrastructure as well, as we're building out? Are we making sure we're charging enough in SDCs to accommodate that, or?
We don't collect one for electricity.
Okay. Because that's, mainly because that's going through Cub.
Or, or, infrastructure.
Okay, so that's not, okay.
But Dr. Cub has an SDC that they.
For water.
For water, probably should.
Good question, though.
Interesting.
Any other comments or questions on, yes?
We have a franchise fee.
Yes.
From Cub, in lieu of.
Sorry, I know you're working with Ashley on findings for the moratorium. Is this, and I think I heard you say that, like, part of the issue that you're having with drafting those findings is that it's really hard to delineate what kind of development you will be imposing, the council may consider imposing a moratorium upon, is that right?
Yes, and then, and back to the analogy of, let's say you're right under a point, let's say you're 0.98 megawatt, those, those, those are the difficult, or like, there's several almost 1 megawatt issues, I think those are, that's the challenge.
Yeah, that makes sense. It is a tough place to put in. I'm sure Ashley's going to, will talk more about this, but I guess the risk of, like, trying to be too precise is that you exclude situations that maybe you should, would have been better to include in the moratorium, right? Like, you're trying to find the balance between overly broad and yet not too narrow at the same time. But it sounds like Cub is, is able, has been able to give you more specific information lately?
That, that's the, they were in the meeting with us, with PGE, and that is the belief that we have, yes, that they'll, that we're all in this together, and we're going to figure out, like, what the need is. And I, I hear what you're saying completely. I think there, the risk is that because land use-wise, we can't preclude someone from going forth with a development, even at risk.
Yeah.
That, that's the challenge. And, you know, because without a moratorium.
Yeah, that's a tough puzzle for you guys to figure out.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Patton has something else to say.
Can we charge electricity STCs?
I don't believe.
That's not one of the.
I don't believe so, it's not one of the categories. But I'll double check real fast.
It's not a city, it's not a city service that we, yeah, it's, it's not something we provide. I mean, that's, yeah.
Okay, so here is, this has now piqued my curiosity. We might not, if we can't charge a SDC for power, then when we do these developments, these new developments, we charge them fees that go towards, like, Walnut Street, and those sort of things. Would we be able to create, like, a power grid fee, where we could say, every development is going to pay this much fee based on a percentage, and that money will go into a fund that will help purchase a new power line?
I'm going to defer to Emily on this, because that, that scenario you're, you're talking about was for a transportation issue that we had full authority and control over. Proportionality was in play here, and that's legally allowable.
Yeah.
But I'm not even sure if we can even go there with electricity. That's a question for our attorneys.
I am also going to defer to Ashley, who I am texting now about it.
Oh, I don't need to know right now, but I, my curiosity has peaked. If, if that's the case, and we need to.
That's my deeply adused stuff.
We, we need to, like, pay for a new power line, or Canby Utility needs to pay for a new power line, I'd be interested in collecting money for that. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, to me, it would seem like the doubt's at Canby Utility thing, and again, it being a public utility, you know, that, is that something that the citizenry of Canby maybe pushes forward?
Well, but part of the, but one of the things is that, one of the reasons why the moratorium and all that stuff had to come. stuff had to come to us, because even though Cambi Utility is their own governing body, they're run through us as the city, right? So, if there was some sort of agreement that the city collected that fee, or Cambi Utility collected a fee for every developer that's trying to do a housing development, or a huge industrial project or something, and that money was then put into a pot that was specifically designated for purchasing a new power line, I think that would be a heck of a thing.
Okay. Council President Hensley, rebuttal?
Not necessarily rebuttal, but just something to consider, because, I mean, it's already snow cones, don't have a chance tonight. We've been agreeing too much today. No, I was just offered that I would like to see what other jurisdictions do. If power SDCs aren't a thing other places, that could make us less attractive for development.
It's looking like that is not something we can do.
At all?
Yes. The, the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment puts limits on to the types of fees that you can tie into development.
Well, it seems, it seems odd to me that we, we have development, and we have to pay for infrastructure for development, but yet there's one sec, it's on. There's one section of, an important part of the infrastructure that seems to be out of the, the loop of infrastructure development. And so, I'm just not sure, again, what do other places, and I know we're different, a little bit different because we have our own utility, and so what does Cambi Utility have for increased development, infrastructure, build-out? What's their plan on that?
And I agree with him. What, I mean, I know physically, there's a difference between a pipe and a, and a wire, but I think legally, I can't see what the difference between a pipe and a wire is. We can charge for a pipe and not for a wire. I don't know why there'd be a legal difference between a pipe and a wire.
We don't have a franchise with them. We can have them come in, and we can talk, you know, offline, of course, but we have a, what's called in lieu of taxes for around a million dollars with Cambi Utilities, so, in our budget that we receive, so.
But it sounds like the city's on the hook for $45 million to build, to upgrade a line.
Yeah, that's a big difference.
So, yeah.
Well, but even that, I think, is more Cambi Utility than it is the city. You know, so, it, in your free time.
Free time. I'll add it to the, the.
No, but it isn't, it's, it is an interesting argument and conversation piece to have.
Yeah.
You know?
Just to, just to wrap up, we're keeping Don pretty busy. In Janu, let's see, November, we're going to have a work session on SDCs, okay? And with a public hearing scheduled for January. So, thank you, Don, for that. In February, comp plan is targeted for adoption, okay? So, that's exciting, turn of the new year. And TSP work for adoption in March to follow right after that. So, big, big three, the big trifecta coming from Don's shop. I think I'll leave it at that. Still in background on finance, Director, I'll, I'll keep you posted. Anything shakes there? 10th Street, we're looking at paving here pretty soon.
Yep, next week.
Next week, weather permitting, and try and do a little, small celebration barbecue with the neighborhood, maybe here at City Council before your meeting, working on that, those details as well. They've been through a lot.
Yes, they have.
So, appreciate their patience.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Nelson, will you come to the table there?
Yeah.
Because I have a follow-up question from the Urban Renewal District meeting tonight.
Yeah.
It is regarding Walnut Street, and so, as was stated, right, we have $3 million of the ARPA funds that we need to be used by the end of 2026, the calendar year, correct?
Yes, DC, yes, December of '26.
So, will we meet that deadline to spend that $3 million by the end of next year?
I think we have to.
No, no, I know we have to.
Yeah.
But, because I don't want to give it back.
Unless, we'll keep you posted, unless something doesn't come through, we're still on schedule to be able to meet that.
Okay, all right. I was just, just looking at the, what, what's still to do, and 10% done in the pipeline, but 10 can go to 90 pretty quick, which is great, but, again, I was just, something that just kind of rang in my head, like.
No, and it's, I'm glad you brought it up, because we've been having conversations with ODOT a lot lately about this, just to make sure, because this is a good thing, and I think Councillor Heeb, or House Representative Heeb helped us with that funding, and we want to make sure and put it to that, so. No, it's, it's important to us, but thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, no, I, it'd be a heck of a large amount of asphalt and gravel to buy if we weren't.
Yep, yep, it'd be unfortunate.
Scratch a check, and I'll, I'll pay for a hamburger today for Tuesdays next week.
I had one more.
Pay Tuesday for a hamburger today.
Okay. Just for everyone's edification, that, that is Walnut up on the screen, total budget 21.8 million. You can see the lifespan of the project there from 2018 all the way up here to 2015, thanks to Finance for providing the budget amounts, and then what's spent and the highlighted. So, you can see we're about 2.4 million into the spent column. So, we got a long ways to go, like, we were just explaining tonight, while we may be 80% done with design, 80% done with sewer, 10% overall complete. So, we're, we're pushing on the IGA, we're pushing on the easements, we're pushing on the signalization at 99. The property owners have signed off on the easements, Urban Renewal needs to do an easement, as Jamie explained earlier. So, once we unlock that trifecta that Jerry's working on, we're full go, and constructing early next year and spending the ARPA money, Mayor.
Good.
Yeah, and then, in the agreement with it, you know, it lists all of it, the signal, all that stuff is, so we can start spinning on that when we get going on building, buying, and purchasing the equipment and all that, so.
Okay.
If we can get going, it'll go fast, as you can see the prices of it.
For sure.
Is this going to be a city signal or an ODOT signal?
ODOT.
Okay.
Great. Jerry, you had something else to add?
I had one more thing to add, just to, South Ivy, it's going great. They're going to attempt to stripe it Friday and Saturday. All the mainline on Friday, and weather depending, but they're, they're praying for no rain so they can get that done and get their equipment out of there and move on. So, I just want to pass that on.
Well, we all better pray, because I heard rain Saturday.
I have to.
Today was the day to do it.
But this time of year, it's pretty unpredictable, so.
Sure.
Okay, well, no rain!
It's a beautiful, beautiful project.
It's sure fun seeing, that's my commute to work, so I've been able to keep a good guy, seeing the kids use the sidewalks and making it safe and all that, it's great. It's been a long, long, long project.
Another one I can cross off my list.
Another, yep.
Been kicking that hand down, or how many?
We're getting, we're getting them, Mayor.
It's only been 13 years to get that one done, you know?
So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right.
It's been a long time coming, yeah.
Mr. Ely, anything else?
End of report.
Okay, sir. Item 11, citizen input. All right, nothing from citizenry. Action review.
You approved the consent agenda, you adopted ordinance 1657, and adopted resolutions 1444 and 1445.
Fabulous, thank you. Any other fun and exciting news anyone wants to report? Good, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Maybe adjourn.
Give him a second. Great, follow the paper.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye. I'm voting to do it. I'm not voting against it.
Oh, I thought you were voting.
I had a delayed button.
Were you voting against it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, we're adjourned. Thank you, Cambi, good night.